I'm going to go against that twice before and I tend to, and I did intend to, to vote for A2. So, I apologize if I've just thrown off by that sequence.
Definitely. Sorry for your sitting there. Request, he didn't amend the, so for your request.
May I have a request then, please?
On A1, the vote was four to one. And then, we have not yet voted on any to, any discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Oh, we did not have, we did not have a motion.
We had a motion on the first one, I guess.
It was just Al.
Correct, correct, correct. Alright.
How far we down the first one?
So, back that up.
We got two votes.
Three one, take Marine. We have a motion.
Okay, so I would make a motion on A2, second.
Discussion on A2, and a motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution to Resolution 15-71 authorizing the major executive agreement on behalf of the City of Council Plus, of the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency MAPPA, of the Hartland Regional Compact.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion.
We had a presentation at the study session, uh, earlier today, and I thank the, the help for coming in and making that a recent intervention. And, uh, I asked that we delay action on, on this resolution until, uh, next week. We'll have a better chance to, uh, study over, uh, the underlying documents which are fairly voluminous, as well as, uh, as get a, a legal read, answer the questions. Uh, we're at that point now, or we're, we're voting on the resolution nonetheless. I, I, I accept the fact that, um... I, I accept the fact that people have, have put these materials together in good faith, and that members of the council, uh, want to move forward on, on this in good faith. And, uh, and I, in good faith, have, have some concerns, uh, about the compact as well as the, the underlying, underlying document. And, uh, in the action steps, it, uh, it asks that we, that we sign this compact, and it says, "By simply an agreement with Hartland Vision, goals, outcomes, principles and commitment to work together." And it goes on. Bottom, so, so we're agreeing to a set of words here that have to be agreed not only with cooperation, but desired outcomes for the future that will help guide policy decisions of, of the city. And as I go through, there are some words, uh, in this vision document that frankly caused me some concern. Uh, at the bottom of, of page four of the vision document, uh, it says, and it's in bold print, "The Hartland needs a growth model that is driven by equity, just and fair inclusion into society." So, I wonder if this is a development document or a social justice document. Page eight goes on to say, and quote, "Collective impact is a model of working together across sectors on complex, large-scale, social issues." So, again, I ask, is this a, is this oriented towards development of our, our area? And, and outcomes for the action plan, outcome four point five proposes a strategy that asks us to support programs for integrating new arrivals, including immigrants. And this will come at some cost, not only to the city, but as to the region as a whole. And I think we have, need to have a serious discussion about these costs, and who is going to bear the cost before we proceed with these action plans in, in future. So, while I appreciate the good faith of those who put together this document, I think we need to slow down and have a more detailed, serious discussion about where we're headed with this, not only as a region, but as a community. Because MAPPA is a, is a intergovernmental body that is making decisions that have not been elected by the voters and the taxpayers of this community. So, for that reason, I think we need to be very cautious and inquire as to the legal authorities for doing this compact.
Yes, but, and you may have questions for him, but Greg Reeder is trying to point out that Greg's new here from MAPPA, that, that, you know, we do allow people to escape from the public if you do decide you want to do that, so Greg will say, make sure Greg does that.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, Greg Ull, the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, MAPPA. Uh, I'm not going to rehash my entire presentation that I gave this afternoon. Uh, we do have a couple, uh, participants from the Steering Committee here that have replied to this meeting on behalf of the project, I will, I guess briefly, uh, speak to the points that were raised, uh, as far as this is a social justice document. And I would say one of the things that we look at is if we grow in the future, uh, in particular where, where the most significant portion of population growth areas are coming from. They're coming from low income and low educational attainment area segments of our population. So, uh, I think that is part of the economic development strategy in recognizing that if we don't reverse those trends across every single racial and ethnic group in 2000 to 2010, poverty increased quite significantly. So, um, there's, there's a recognition of that, that, that those are issues that, that are going to impact our ability to grow in the future. So, we believe that by 2050 is an opportunity to work together, uh, across county lines and across state lines to try and address some of those issues and be more proactive.
I had a question for you, if I could, a minute.
Sure, a second.
Uh, earlier today, you said that we proceed in accordance with this, uh, with this plan, that you would expect budgetary savings for the region of about $5 billion. What is the statistical basis, what, what, what's the source of the data that you would have used to arrive at that?
Right, that, that's based on some modeling that was done, uh, through the, on the 2050 process. We use the software, uh, to look at, uh, future development plans, so you could look at, uh, basically the overall, so it's a big picture number of total public funds, so that takes into account roads, water, sewer parts, and other funds that are, are covered, that a community has to cover.
So, what was, what was the source of the data that was being modeled?
Source of the data would, had, came from all the local governments in Nana throughout the eight counties.
Based upon what they've been spending or what they expected to spend?
The source of the forecast, what you're asking.
But, that's what I'm, I'm asking, is, is what numbers were available to you? Were, were those the numbers that they're already spending on certain policy budgetary issues? Or that they expect to be spending in the future?
Right, so, we took a look at the way we've grown in the past thirty to forty years, and, and based on the experts who worked on this, forecasted that, that those trends continue. And then, what are the anticipated costs of those? Again, working in collaboration with a lot of the staff of the local governments, we received data, uh, MAPPA worked on some of that data, and it's also proprietary sources. So, the forecast was involved as to when the companies would rise population forecast, and we noticed in, instead of the, uh, outer main counties of the, of the eight county region.
Okay, and, and who are these experts that were scrambling, Mr. Dan?
These would be, uh, the members of the project team, the consultants that are economists, economists, planners. Questions?
I appreciate your, your answer.
And so, I'll introduce that, Dr. Dan Kenny, President of Iowa State.
Dr. Kenny, can you give your name and address?
Dan Kenny, 23008 Franklin Road, Council Plus. And, uh, yes, I was on the Steering Committee, and there are just a couple of things I'd like to address. One is that there is no intent that this 2050 plan, uh, will take any prerogatives away from any local government. In fact, it very clearly stated in the document that the cities and counties within this region will maintain local control. This is an effort to get organizations to work together collaboratively for the betterment of the whole region, which includes nine counties, three in Iowa and six in Nebraska. One of the things that the Steering Committee did, and that gets to your question a little bit, is, is that there were approximately seventy-five citizens from this region that were part of that Steering Committee. And, uh, those people all had expertise in different areas, and then we did bring in some experts to assist with parts of it. Uh, and we modeled some of what Salt Lake City had done with their plan, and if you've been to Salt Lake City, you see that they've had a tremendous result for their region, not just the city of Salt Lake. And so, the, the data and the plan, there was expertise in each of these areas. For example, in the area of education, the collaboration's already started. Uh, we've been having some meetings, we're beginning to move forward and address the issues. One of the, the sections that you were probably reading from, Mr. Reinberg, was the area dealing with poverty. And it's amazing, of all the data that we collected, and that was one piece of the data, we square is poverty. And certainly, there are certain parts of the metro area that people would point to and say, "This is where poverty exists." But what's surprising, when you look at the whole nine counties, the dots aren't as big, but poverty exists in a lot of places. And one of the things that we have to do with economic development, with education, is that we have to address poverty if we're going to change things in this economy and for the people that live here. And so, that's, it's not social justice, it's not social engineering, it's trying to deal with the issues that exist. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Pat Maywood, 2807 Fifth Avenue. Yeah. Uh, it is social justice, because you want to take stuff away from me to give to somebody else for poverty. That's exactly what it is, and that's wrong, that's called theft. And I don't want to live in Omaha, so I don't want to deal with their things, that's why I live over here.
So, I addressed the council, you don't address the people in the audience or what have you.
Well, you've already heard what I said, so.
I did.
I'm Barry Cleveland, uh, 1435 Pearson, I'm here as a favor of the, of the plan. I served as the Chairman of the Transportation Steering Committee, uh, throughout the process, and, uh... As far as the, some of the cost savings that were, that we helped to achieve, um, goes back to those who failed the plan, plan to fail. With transportation quarters, if you can outline and plan the quarters and preserve the quarters, they're much, uh, less inexpensive to acquire, um, or to develop. So, that is some of the cost savings, at least in the transportation area.
Any questions? We have a motion on that area.
We do, but we didn't get our discussion yet. I, I just wanted to say that we discussed this a little bit this afternoon, and, um, I, I do support the resolution. This is, this, basically, at this time, this is a, um, an announcement of support from the City, City Council for this collaboration of, of many different entities that are coming together to make our, our region better. Uh, it does not, um, allocate any funds or staff or, or in any way, um, take costs or anything from the city, it's just a general statement of support, uh, at this time. Now, as we go forward, there may be some costs, or there may be some, some people that would be involved, and that would be a part two that would also come for the council. But at this time, this is just a general statement of, hey, that's a good idea, let's, let's, let's continue the collaboration and the discussion. So, on, on the basis of that, I would support this resolution.
Any other discussion?
I don't think it's harmful to plan and to work together and to have a discussion amongst the various entities that are all still, including your city government, are still elected by you, decisions you, you elect for years and then make decisions, that doesn't change. There are, there's some folks who had been certain that this was a takeover by the world government or the United Nations or something like that. No, it's, it's cities and within the eight counties, and, uh, next to one another, the people live next to one another. And, on the one hand, we talk about all the challenges we have, about economic development, about finding good jobs, having a tax structure, and roads to get people places. But, on the other hand, some folks would suggest that we don't plan, and that all those apparently will sort themselves out. I, I disagree. I think there are plenty of examples, um, that would prove that point. And tonight, though, I, I look forward to that discussion, because it is a very interesting discussion about the, the meat, about it, but tonight isn't about the documents we got this afternoon. Those are for the next phase, about what we might do, uh, going forward tonight, but it is about the documents we received over months, or I think about a year ago, I was involved in some interviews, and I think we, we, we interviewed a lot of folks around eight counties, not just elected people. We've had that information for quite some time. And tonight's vote is, as, as an idea, do we want to keep going forward or not? It's just a statement of intent, we're not getting to the nitty-gritty of it, forward in that discussion on business. I think it's important to have that.
I'd just like to say, we've already had some success as a city in working in a more regional manner with our, in that Southwest Iowa, and in fact, a, a project that we should see, uh, right around here real soon with the XLT project, was a direct result of collaboration through the partnership with Omaha and the surrounding counties. Um, that was a project that we may never have gotten the lead on had it not been part of a regional group. So, I think looking at the areas of region is, is definitely beneficial to the taxpayers and, and to the economic development of Council Plus, so I will support this.
I'm all in favor of planning. I built, I'm like the military for, based on planning. And so, I, I think I understand that process. And, and in doing that, that planning, you have to be careful, paying careful attention to the words that are being applied, not only in the supporting plans, but also in figuring out where you think you're going and what the costs would be. And, uh, in the first steps for, for implementation of this compact, uh, it, it says that, uh, that committees and staff will be, will be formed, that there will be, uh, a commitment to attending meetings, providing staff, and to the extent possible, financials. I, I understand that, that the point that regional cooperation is essential if we're going to grow economically, awful lot of this, these words go well beyond economic purpose. And I might endeavor to point out that the XLT project was worked out and brought to approval without this compact. So, it can be done when people of goodwill are coming together to, to enter into, to those discussions. And, uh, and I understand that this is supposedly just a general broad guideline. We said the same thing about plus around 2030. And all the work on the, on the council agendas since the passage of that have been pretty much in lockstep with that plan. And now, if you look at the details within this vision document, it looks like we may have to go back and relook at plus 2030, because it takes a different view on some things. So, this is where we need to think about the underlying documents, where we think we're headed, and why.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
Resolution 15-72 authorizing staff changes with permits and inspections division of the Public Works Department.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion.
I will say, I know who's older here, but I was not there, I was switching to active inspection. Uh, I do think that permit commission is a great idea, it kind of squares out the job from having it all in the, um, so, I think that's a great idea, and I fully understand I would be going against, just because it's the lower active program, so to talk about that.
From that respect, you're, you always gotta consistently be on it, it's, it's a fair point. So, I appreciate you telling us some of your, um, thoughts and go on that. I tend to, and it's probably a surprise, I tend to support, uh, staff in the, uh, the active inspection program, but I respect those.
I too appreciate and support your, your comments, I agree with you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Aye.
And for the, again, the vote was three to two, for passing.
Resolution 15-73, requiring contract to Mon Smith Company for the return to the Fairmont Park improvement projects.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion.
Folks, uh, the weather's getting nicer now, if you go up in the Fairmont Park, I encourage you to do it. You'll notice that over the last several months, uh, most of last fall, that it started off the end now, or will, I'm sure, a lot of the trees are being thinned out, a lot of the, the junk trees that weren't there originally, and that are choking out the native species, that block the views in places that are supposed to have, and they did. It's, it's cleaning up the park, and on this specific vote, it's one part of that whole place. It's to bring in a, a water park, and it's, it's not a pool. Those are fun, uh, those have demand, those have significant viability and insurance situation. Uh, this splash pad, imagine the one next to the current Mel's Park Fountain, writ large. Lots of, lots of areas for parents to sit on benches and watch for kids. It's a fantastic project. A lot of people talk about how they want places to go, a lot of good places for the kids to go, and to have an active life with the families again, and to get back to that. A lot of people want to get back to that, and so, they've heard your lead, so they can answer the need. It's most important to, and I'd like to, uh, point out that the, um, that the, the top bid actually came in twenty percent less than what we estimated it would cost, so that, that's, uh, that's a great thing.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Sure.
No, I'm not against this, I'm for it, but I'm asking for, I know our city attorney said there is a master plan, uh, which, on half, has, have you guys seen that plan?
We announced it by.
Oh, so there is, I missed last year.
No, it was 2005.
Yeah.
So, it was, so everybody knows, when I asked for, I said, "What is the next step we're going to do?" And everybody just said, "We don't know."
It depends on the sources of money we can get, quite frankly. About half of this, this current round, the trees and the water park are being divided by groups such as the New Nursery, uh, ILS Foundation, uh, there's a state preparation grant that the staff is very diligent about, it's a very competitive grant that they managed to lend for us. About half of it will come from, uh, tax, total taxation, so half of it's coming from other sources than taxes.
So, this is a ten-year-old plan, and that's, is there any way maybe that, maybe that should be updated? Because since then, we've got a lot more bike traffic and stuff like that, and was that considered back ten years ago?
It actually is a new plan, the 2005 plan, we're not doing anymore of that for a variety of reasons, it turned out to be far too expensive, plus the riverfront, uh, part took priority, which is our front door, probably makes sense, I think that's, um... We're into a new plan now called the Return to Fairmont Park Plan, and it, it depends on how much money we're able to find. We're not going to fund it fully through taxes, because we don't have it, but, uh, we're doing it as best we can. Uh, originally, before this, uh, reemergence of this idea of doing stuff in Fairmont, because so many people told us that, but, um, it wasn't in the plan at all, that 2005 plan's clearly been on the shelf. And if it hadn't been for lots of people speaking out, advocating for it, it'd probably be twenty years before we'd even start this. We got, you know, journey without miles, we began to descend the slope, and I think we made at least a few miles headway into it.
No, no, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm for this, I didn't wait forever for this to be done, because I'm talking about even the seventies, when I lived on Park Avenue, the park was deteriorating, and that's why I want to know how, and now, what's the next, what, you know, what is the next phase? Like now, you got two phases going on, you got cutting of the screw-ups and...
What I would suggest, sir, is, is you just, um, contact the Parks Department and ask to see a copy of the master plan, Parks Plan that we adopted in the last year or so. And that way you can see everything that, it, it's just a plan, a plan that you plan.
No, but I just wanted to know what's our next step?
No, you, you also, you know, the Parks, the Parks and Rec, uh, we have a, a commission made up of residents with, uh, the Parks and Rec Director, Larry Foster, and their meetings are public, and we post them online. If you, if you're not able to access that, shoot me a message, Bruce, and I'll, I, or any of us can tell you how to get that, or we'll get you a copy. You can tend, they get into detail, though, isn't it, how directly do you go? And then you can, you're able to get input, your replay from the get-go.
I'd just like to know, I'm going to see. I'm going to see this done before I'm, yeah.
You know, that's actually good, too, actually, though, the Parks and Rec Commission meets once a month, and, and that would be posted on the city's website, so just check and see what the next meeting is, and...
It's an open meeting?
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
Bush, Bush, I know this is, this is, you get more, you get more. Alright, um, I believe we've had that vote, so I think we're on sixty.
Are we already voting?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have to vote till I, I think it was?
Resolution 15-72, authorizing the mayor to execute Iowa Department of Transportation reconstruction, reconstruction agreement number two, two, 2015 dash four dash two ten, in connection with the I-8 interstate improvements.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-75, appointing bankers and trust company of G Y Iowa to serve as paying agent, unregistered and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement, along with E. One Resolutions, Resolution 15-76, authorizing and providing for the issuance of $8,145,000 general obligation bond, Series 2015A, and levying a tax to pay said bonds, because they are a mon, a line resolution, 2011.
Discussion, or, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, Resolution 15-75 and 15-76.
Second.
Discussion.
These votes are part of the process of appointing some of the procedural banks that need to be part of, uh, a lot of the bonds that were, uh, they went four percent or higher.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, um, that otherwise would have cost us that over the next couple of years. The, the mayor was able to, uh, suggested that we redid them out, and, uh, so, we're going to end up paying half of other folks' bottled bonds, buying out people, and we're going to get four and a half, and now we're going to get, in some cases, under two percent, saving several hundred thousand, as I recall, or four hundred and some thousand, thank you, to the taxpayer. This is part of the procedural process, and sometimes it's hard to understand, but this is what this is.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-77, appointing bankers and trust company of G Y Iowa to serve as paying agent, unregistrar and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement. And F. One Resolution 15-78, authorizing and providing for the issuance of $3,620,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015B, and levying a tax to pay said bonds.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 15-77 and 15-78.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-79, designating city attorney Richard Wade or mayor Matthew J. Walsh as the person authorized to sign documents and letters between the city and the United States Department of Agriculture.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Resolution 15-80, for the City Council, approving the strategic plan for the City of Council Plus.
Motion to approve, second.
Is there a discussion?
Reading over this, this document, uh, again, I, I think that a lot of good, good work is put into this document, and a lot of good faith is put into it, and there's frankly some very good ideas incorporated in, such as an intent to endeavor to preserve... and there's frankly some very good ideas incorporated in, such as an intent to endeavor to preserve our city's past and revise the, uh, both those excellent ideas. But, uh, again, words, uh, words mean things, and it's some of the other words that, that caused me some concern, and, uh, and initiatives under this document, uh, has said that we ought to develop new functions, and that, uh, that we're, that we ought to, uh, build a major indoor fieldhouse. That's initiative, and, uh, that will be brought to a fore at some point. Again, words, uh, and in approving the strategic plan, we're voting, we're voting, voicing approval for those initiatives contained within that plan. But in the, in the art of good strategy and planning, plans typically inform the strategy, and, uh, and the strategy works back down to revise the, the planning. And I, I would recommend that, that, uh, the work that's gone into this document, that, uh, that we study the, the process for going forward, the strategic planning in, in the forward, in the future, to ensure that, uh, our, our strategies are informed by, by our results that we've been achieving, and then how those plans in turn are going to be periodically updated to drive from the strategy. So, again, my compliments for, uh, for all the work that has gone into this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign.
Aye.
All those at home, who voted for it?
Applications for permits and cancellations.
Motion to approve seven A, one hundred four, close.
Aye.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, and, are there any requests for citizens to be heard?
None received.
Anybody from the audience, like to register the council?
Bruce Kelly, it's the former county attorney, I came in on the late, and, uh, you had discussions going on, and everything else like that. But if you guys get paid, I wouldn't do it. And then you brought up, and the other deal, collecting barney, I am a union democrat, controlling, you know, I lead collecting barney, in which everything else, and then you brought up COLA, cost of living and everything else. I got twenty-one dollars. More than half of it went for, they took for more, my medical went out. And then with all the increases and stuff and everything else, that, both taxes, car insurance and everything else, all they did was help cover twenty-one dollars, like the hundreds of dollars that I'm paying out more, a month, than I should have. And then the city budget and everything else said they didn't raise. It is raised, because the state of Iowa raised the residential part of it, so it isn't that he didn't raise, and that's the point that I'd just like to say that you're not, you're still, you're bringing in more because the state of Iowa allowed the housing part of it to go up, what? One point three percent?
Awesome.
Yeah, so there was a, there was a rate of one point three percent.
Thank you. Bruce, on the hundred thousand dollar house, that equated to about twenty-three dollars, um, annual increase, it is raised. People don't understand, because they say, well, we didn't increase the taxes, there's two-sided formula, it's a levy and valuation. If either side increases, then the net taxes you pay increase. In this case, the state rollback, at this point in time, is actually rolling forward the one point three percent.
Yeah, that's what I meant, and I think that's where people go under the influence of, our taxes are going to be exactly the same, but that's where it should have been mentioned, the state mandate raised it, but we don't have to raise to our seventeen something, we're paying it per thousand.
Seventeen seventy-five.
Seventeen seventy-five, but they're going to be, I'm going to be paying probably, I'm under two hundred thousand, with my two prob, with my two prob, two hundred thousand dollars, so I'm, I'm still paying more, and that's where I think, where you get in the talk, where, well, they did go up, but stuff like that, that's where I think a lot of this conversation went, went to the wrong, when it tells them, yeah, it did go up, but you guys didn't put up your portion, but the state raised it, so you are getting it, I mean, so that's, you know...
About seven hundred and six thousand dollars.
And there's a backfill from the state, uh, in the amount of one ninety dollars, and that backfill, based upon, it was like your, based upon their promise at the time that the, uh, tax legislation was passed.
I mean, that's like on the, they said they paid for your, your, our bill, and...
They promised they'll pay it forever, but they've never kept a promise of anything else.
I said this at the, a year ago at the county board, and they said, yeah, the state owed, um, eight hundred and some thousand dollars, and they just said, yeah, checks in the mail. And that's what I, I think people have to understand, just because Iowa says they're going to roll back all this, and they're going to give you back your tax, you, we're going to have to fight for it, or you, you're never going to see it.
By the way, the budget says it goes forward, assume that we don't necessarily get that money, it's very conservative in that sense, so if anything, it would be pleasant surprise, this is a very conservative budget, because of the points you raised.
Because I know, I brought it up to the county almost a year ago, and they said they owed him eight hundred and some dollars in personal taxes and stuff, and I go, yikes. I just looked at them, and I smiled, and they just looked at me, and I go, are you really going to think you're going to get it? I just...
I did, I did learn something, you know, Bruce, a couple weeks ago, that it is a standing appropriation, and so what that means is that both the House and the Senate have to vote to take it away, and the governor has to sign it, so, not that that couldn't happen, tough budget years, it probably will happen, but it's a little more substantial than, than what I initially thought it was, was just a year to year template.
And the House has committed this year that, well, I would take that away, that test, that word, that...
My name is Dick, five, thirty-six oh six, seven two eight. Um, with the budget and that, you know, you have in the community, and that's great that you got, that you make more money than most do, but you've got people making eight dollars, ten dollars, fourteen dollars an hour, that haven't had raises in years, five, six, ten years, and you're asking to, for your employees to get raises soon? You know, you need to look at your, your people, the residents here, and the twenty-four percent, put it in front of the voters to give you the twenty-four percent raises. Ask them, or explain to them why you deserve a twenty-four percent raise. Don't do like the federal government did years ago, give themselves thirty-three percent. Also, last, two weeks ago, I was not here, but I heard that you had a two million dollar bond issue that was, that you approved. You put up five hundred thousand dollars for Playland Park for, to be done. Tell me you don't, you're not having problems with the budget, you're spending way too much money for something you shouldn't be doing.
And just, just clarification, there was nothing in that bond issue related to Playland Park. Um, it did, there was monies for parks, um, which included the Mid-City Trail, and included Fairmont Park, but nothing for Playland Park.
But this makes a difference, you're going to move that money, to where do you want to move it? Does he ever listen?
Um, Playland is a TIF, and by Iowa bonding law, without a public hearing approval, we can't just move it there, and so that, we can't do it in that particular case. You're right, there is some flexibility if it's not in an urban renewal area, but in this case, Playland Park is. On councils told us that, because it's in an urban renewal area, it needs its own separate hearing, and so if we were, um, actually, we approved a two million dollar bond issue for the street down there, but it wasn't included in that bond issuance. Um, we pulled it back based on the petition from, uh, from the area property owner, or from whoever signed the petition, um, because there was potential that within thirty days, they could, um, bring a court proceeding and, and challenge our determination that, that the petition wasn't valid, and so we pulled that off the current bond issue, but they did vote to approve two million for Playland Park. We don't know that we're going to need that yet, and we're hoping to get what's called a rise grant, which is an economic development grant from the city of Iowa. Um, there's potential we could do that, so I don't want to completely mislead you, but the bond issue that was issued does not include anything for Playland.
Okay, is the bond, that two million dollar new bond, does that have to go in front of the voters, or do you guys make a decision?
It's, it's subject to what's called a reverse referendum, and we, we publish it, the public has ten days, um, to bring a petition. If you remember recent newspaper articles, that did happen. They need to have, I believe, thirty percent of the number of people who voted in the previous election, that number on the petition. That would have been six hundred and ten signatures on the petition, the petition they brought had six hundred and twelve signatures. I think twenty-nine we found were not council plus residents, who were, didn't put their address down, which is a requirement, their name and address, and so , um, the petition was determined to be invalid, we went ahead and voted to appropriate the money, um, but we did not include that in the bond issuance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, uh, looking over the C I P for, uh, for FY sixteen, uh, I noted a, uh, white item P R, uh, which is, uh, Parks Recreation Property, seventeen oh eight, and that provides, uh, two point four million dollars, uh, for, uh, for Playland Park, uh, Phase Two, and I would presume that, as much as that's in Parks Recreation, that's not the public works, uh, portion of that.
This might get shut down.
I can't hear what you're saying, I'm, I'm sorry. I noted that, that in the capital improvement plan, that there is a item under Parks and Recreation, not, not under Public Works, but under Parks and Recreation, for an allocation of, of two point four million dollars for, uh, for Playland Park. So arguably, that's not for, for infrastructure costs, that's, that's for something else, and, uh, I'll be looking forward to seeing the details.
That's Phase Two of the Playland Park, Hanifin Park, uh, development, which is to develop a, a landing area at the end of the pedestrian bridge. Um, but that wasn't included in the bond issue you referenced, it's in the capital improvement plan, which is planning ahead for future expenditures, but was not in the, in the body.
And spending money on, on the West End, uh, parks is important, not just another area, and this, I think, is a matter of people, people in every part of the city pay taxes, and I do think for a long time, that, uh, we could have perhaps spent more on the West, compared to what they're putting in, and this does that, this does that. And, you know, as to the other, we have a party to race through, but, you know, I'm not worried about myself, I'm worried about the vast number of people who can't afford to sit up here, because they can't afford to take time off from their job to do this for free. I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about the president. If we really want this to stay representative into the future, especially if, if you don't think it's representative now, keep making it possible for the vast majority of people to even be possible to sit up here, and if, and if you think that's good for, good government and representation of everybody's views, I guess I disrespect, I disagree with you.
I, I think that the council has always been cognizant of the fact that, um, many people have less, that, you know, our, if you look at our community, um, it actually is one of the reasons why our levy rate is higher. I was, uh, kind of surprised that Des Moines' levy rate, I think, was sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents, ours is seventeen seventy-five. And the reason for that is they have substantial commercial development, and they can spread it out over a wider tax base, which is one of the strategies and tax that the council's tried to take over the years, is to increase that tax base. Um, and ultimately, if that happens, then we can lower the levy for everybody. If, if you keep the tax base constricted, those people in the tax base have to pay more, because it's, as Bruce pointed out earlier, every expense that he has is going up every year, and the city's similar to an individual, our, our salaries primarily are employees, but their utilities, their petroleum, their, their staples that individuals pay for, and, uh, so that we can keep it affordable for those that, that can't afford it, even affordability, we need to be cognizant of it, but, uh, but to try and spread out that tax base. The other revenue sources that's been alluded to several times are what's called user fees. And we could put it on your property taxes, um, and that would be the easy, simple way, but, but why not put it on building permit fees for businesses that are building buildings? Um, why not put it, uh, on gaming fees for people that have enough money to go to the casinos? And so, it's specific uses that, that get an associated tax, those are the other revenue sources we're talking about. Spreading that out so that we can keep property taxes reasonable, um, and, and those people that have more than others that can afford to pay those things, that's where, where more of the money would come from in the future without increasing property taxes. I, I'm telling you, it, it was not easy to keep it at seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents, um, even though health insurance stayed flat, even though FICA stayed flat, even though, um, IFRS stayed flat, even though police and fire retirement went down ten percent. Last year, the former finance director budgeted to spend down reserves in those areas, and so this year, when I budgeted the appropriate cost, we found police and fire retirement went up twenty-nine percent, what we had to, to charge people, because last year they under budgeted. Even though it went down ten percent in cost, the actual levy needed to be twenty-nine percent higher than the previous year, and so um, it's, it's a struggle getting at seventeen seventy-five, and it, I'm not hiding it from anybody, in the general fund, we're five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars short, based on projections, um, for the fiscal year that starts July one fifteen and ends June thirtieth sixteen. And so we're going to need to make some tough decisions sooner rather than later, and the reason I say it that way, if you're five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars short on July one, and you don't do anything until December thirty-first, then you've got to double that cut, so that you can get to the number you get to, so you've got to make a million dollars plus in cuts, and so, um, again, we're evaluating revenues. Um, we have instituted significant cost-saving measures over the last year, um, and things like sending one billing for, for city services could save the taxpayers fifty thousand dollars a year in mailing expense, and, uh, we're centralized purchasing supplies, which they've never done before. We've instituted a cell phone policy that, that saved frankly twenty-two hundred dollars a month. And so it's not huge numbers, but when you start accumulating them together, it becomes real money, and so, um, again, we want to see where we come in, uh, June thirtieth of this year, what, what the budget for two thousand and fifteen look like, and reevaluate, and then we, may frankly have to make cuts we don't want to make, but it doesn't make sense to me to have negative spending, uh, going into the future. And the finance director, the previous finance director, I asked his council, I said, what do you think we ought to have for reserve balances? He thought fifteen million was adequate, that's about twenty-five percent of the general fund operating, and we have a little over thirty percent today, or about twenty-one million, so we can sustain it for a short time, but that's not the way to, to, um, prudently plan going forward, so, um, we need something that we can... So, um, we need something that we can go forward, keep taxes low as possible. But we're looking at everything we can, like, to do that. And, and we hear what you're saying, that honestly, um, you know, I, at, at one point, I was eleven forty laborer and on Friday night, I got a big Samson. And that was a big treat for me, to get a big Samson. And so I, we hear where you're coming from. Any other? Man, Damon Anderson, for the...
Yeah, the fourteen twenty one twenty first Street, um, just make this real quick, I'm a little tired of the world. Um, just wanted you guys to know that I would not want to be waiting for this to happen. I know I've talked with you guys, we spent a lot of hours agonizing over your agendas, over the policies, over all the stuff that's going on. And you're trying to make the best decisions for Council Plus. And I wouldn't want to do it for that amount of money, especially when you have, um, the bashing going on, this is going on tonight. And it hurts me to hear that we have one person who doesn't really have the city's best interests at heart. And I want the rest of you guys to know that I appreciate your, um, hearing and that you guys put a lot of heart into this. And we're ready for you guys to be making the right decisions.
Any other discussion?
I just want to apologize to my fellow council members for my coughing all night and to the audience. I probably should have stayed home, but I'm really committed to being at these meetings and casting those words that matter. So I, I do want to apologize. I know it was, it's very disruptive, um, and I did have to leave the room a few times. So I want to apologize to everybody for that. But the other thing I wanted to say is that I wanted to thank the Cadesville writers. Um, I read this story in the newspaper and it was so heartwarming to see people come out to help their fellow neighbors. And, uh, so Al Ruby, Gary Elgin, Robbie Sears, Roger Brees, Don Wolford, Jim Fogg, and Cindy Ruby. What you did for Zane McGlade is, was not just neighborly, but it was good-hearted. And, um, I want to thank Zane McGlade for his service to our country. And I want to thank the, uh, Cadesville writers for coming out.